That means don't say nothing, Jerry. Welcome to Pal election show Jeff under with this guy right here drinking out of this expensive cup. He's trying to show you Jerry White. What's up buddy?
Oh, I can talk now. Oh, he told me not say nothing Randy. I was, I was.
I meant don't say nothing when the mics are unmuted.
I was being good. You know, just hanging out with our friend.
You've been here an hour. He, he, at Wednesday started being good.
No comment.
Exactly.
When it went record, when he hit play, when we went live. This is Coach Randy Weiss, welcome.
Good morning. Thank you for having me.
Heck yeah, man.
Slide that to you. You got your, your allergies bothering you. Got that Barry White voice going on.
Don't worry. Unlike the city council, these seats won't come up and down.
Okay, that's good news.
Yeah, you're not in Jeff's chair.
We have all, we have all experienced the chair. There's actually a couple, but one's really bad.
Oh, it's so good. One of my favorite stories. Then, then when we, you know, we hear these stories, then we go back and watch the city council meetings and.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
I know one night I looked like Hervé Velázquez.
Clark, uh, uh, Hopper.
Yeah.
He was sitting there one day and I went, why is he so low? He just went with it. He embraced it. I mean, he had the, the things up here. He just.
So fun.
It was great.
So, uh, hey, let's get into this. You've been on the show before, but not in this capacity.
Yes, sir.
Today you're on as, uh, yes, you are an elected official, uh, with Rainbow City, a, a council person, but you are campaigning and you are asking the great people of this city right here.
Yes, sir.
Rainbow City to reelect Coach Randy Weiss. How we say it like that? It seems like a lot.
First of all, you nailed it when you said the great people of Rainbow City.
That's right.
The reason I live in this town is because of the greatness people of Rainbow City. Tornado took out my house in Reed's Mill and believe it or not, a guy that I was riding around on the side of a, an EMT vehicle was a Rainbow City fireman helping me find loved ones and family. And when we decided where to move, that had a huge impact and it helped that my brother also had a house in Rainbow City and, uh, and we came here and just fell in love and that was in 2011.
So it takes a lot for a lifelong residence, resident of Reed's Mill, the close knit community of Webster's Chapel. You, it takes a lot for, for somebody like that to move away. I mean, that's, that's a, you must love something about this city.
I love everything about this city. I, I do. And I, I would say that whether I was running for office or not, our first night here, which was three nights, no, excuse me, four nights after the tornado. We needed some cough syrup. And I went to the, to Walgreens and got some cough syrup and my wife said, did you have some in the car? I said, no, it's right up the road. Now, if you know anything about Reed's Mill, which I love, uh, that would have been a 30 minute trip.
That's right.
And, uh.
Would you cut through and go to ELs? Is that what you're, where you went if you were out there?
Probably not. It would probably went, if, if it was nighttime, Parker's would have been closed, which was my cousin and I worked there for a hundred years, but, um, I would have had to go to Glencoe.
EL's had everything though. Everything.
Exactly. But I love the city and the people.
Heck yeah. Heck yeah. Hey, same thing. Me coming from a tower.
God, I love a tower. That's true.
Actually, to be honest with you, I'm in Rainbow City because that's where my wife wanted to live.
That is a fact.
And we're loving. Hey, good morning, everyone. Thanks for tuning in and watching. Hey, you can't vote for him, Tom. You live in Navar Beach.
Todd, he would vote for him.
Todd would vote for him.
Thank you.
Todd O'Brien's a good dude, man. Love that dude.
Navar Beach is a great, great area as well.
So let's, um, let's talk about your family a little bit, man. You kind of, kind of brought them up and, um, you, uh, love your family and I'll be honest with you, I'm a much bigger fan of your dad than I am you.
I listen, you know, so am I. So am I. I have, if dad announced he was running and lived in Rainbow City, I'd step aside for my, my father. My father, mother are still with us, doing great. Uh, we worried, we had a scare back, uh, I guess about four months ago. Uh, they both went in the hospital at the same time. Uh, came out in pretty rough shape. Uh, uh, praise report, dad's off oxygen now, except when he's sleeping, you know, and so he's doing great. Uh, worried about him yesterday. We were putting a trailer on a tractor and, uh, of course I don't do it the right way according to him. So he had to get in. I said, dad, he goes, I know what I'm doing. I said, yeah, but I'm not 83 years old. Let me do this, you know, and so, um, but, but having said all of that, my, my parents are still alive and of course my immediate family are the, are the, are the, my responsibility and, and I love those, I love my entire family, but, um,
Even Noel?
Even Noel. Yes, I love Noel. You know, I love Noel and my brother Joey, Colonel, Colonel, Colonel Weiss. Having said that though, uh, the love of my life, uh, you know, I won't let her post much about me. She kind of surprised me with that post the other day, but Tanya, uh, she's amazing.
That's awesome. We can't believe she loves you either.
I know it's kind of tricky and, and you know, I'm, I'm, listen, I don't, I don't hide from my emotions. I'm emotional when I talk about my family.
We see you on the, on the, we know.
If, uh, you know, um, that's to me, um, one of the greatest men that I ever knew, uh, cried more than he talked and that was, uh, Bob Ford, who was a student pastor at Jacksonville State and he said, never be ashamed to show your emotions.
Just ask Bob Ross.
Yeah, exactly. I'll paint that squirrel. But anyway, um, my wife Tanya, who I love, uh, the, um, obviously I love her. She's my wife, uh, and, and.
No, that's not obvious. He's the, the damn time.
It is with me, trust me. Um, my oldest son Trey, who's 35, no, excuse me now, he's 36. He is a, uh, he works in Murfreesboro, Tennessee for, uh, for landscaping and pool company. He's one of the executives there.
Great city.
And my younger son, my middle son, Will, works for Trey and, and they, uh, he was just recently moved from Orlando and he's working from Trey up there. He played football at Westbrook. Uh, Trey played baseball at Westbrook and later on at U A B. Grant, um, well, I don't want to skip my daughter. She, she thinks she gets left off a lot. Anyway, she's amazing. She lives in Rome, Georgia. She has two wonderful kids and a husband and, um, her name is Tori, Victoria. Everybody in the Weiss family is named after somebody, you know, and so the, but, um, and then Grant, he was 18. He just graduated South Side and be attending Jacksonville State University. Good little soccer player.
Good, good soccer player. I mean, really.
He, uh, played right back for me, but you can ask anybody, uh, he probably should have started like, you know, Joe said it in the council meeting. He said, I've been an advocate for you. Your dad didn't play you because he was his son.
True.
I, I don't think so, but it is a lot of times coaches' kids get a bad rap. Most coaches are less likely to give their kid a break because of that.
Sure.
You know, and, um, I'm going to have the best 11 on the field. And that's football and soccer. I, I was a football coach for 17 years, high school football coach. And sometimes you don't always get it right.
Right. Yeah. Ask the high school association.
Um, I remember, I'm not going to go there. The, um, I was, I did go there last week. I was.
Yeah, absolutely. Had to go to Montgomery Day.
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, it was, uh, it was a lot of fun too, getting the award and all that good stuff, but, um, but Grant, Grant's really into history, really into government. Uh, I graduated Jacksonville State with a degree in history and government and, uh, the, um, actually a degree in social science composite, which also included economics and political science. Imagine that.
Yeah.
But, um, but having said that, I love my family there. I'm proud of each and every one of them. They all have a unique set of characteristics. Uh, they're not cookie cutters of me or Tanya, either one, you know, they're.
Their own person.
Their own person. They, they really are.
You got a, that's a big family. You got a big family.
Yeah, six grandkids too.
It's a fertile bunch.
You gotta be careful when, you better be careful when you start naming grandkids because you'll leave one out.
We're gonna, we're gonna ask you.
And also, and, and I do this, I'm, I don't want to be emotional. I do have, uh, two daughters that passed away. But, but family is really important to me. Uh, we, we had, um, our daughter Hayden was born, um, two months early. No, excuse me, three months earlier, 25 weeks. Did really well and then got a, um, intestinal disease in, in the hospital and passed away at eight, eight weeks. And then Grant, I mean, then Will was born. He was born a month early with no issues. You, you, you see Will, absolutely no issues. Came out big, strong and everything. Um, and then we thought everything's good and then, uh, we got pregnant again. And, uh, we lost, uh, Addison, um, uh, basically before she was born and, but we did deliver and all that. So, you know, but you don't ask why me? You ask why not me? You know, the rain falls on the righteous and the unrighteous as the Bible says and so. And God doesn't necessarily cause these things, but they're part of this sovereignty of God that we live in the universe that we live in and, uh, you accept it and you move on and, and you, uh, I know they're in a better place already.
Amen to that. Yeah, absolutely.
Well, that's tough. Thank you for sharing that. That's, that's pretty awesome.
I didn't intend on, on sharing that, but when I, when I talk about family, I have to talk about that. But again, uh, but talking about family, coaching is, is my passion as well. Um, as a Christian, that's my top priority. Everything that I do reflects Jesus Christ. Just like when I got my sign, I have my sign on my truck. Uh, I'm going to get killed by the grammar police. I said, I got my sign.
I got it.
When I have my sign on my truck, if I roll through a red light or a don't stop at a stop sign, people are going to say, there's the councilman from Rainbow City. Well, so I don't do those things. Period. My son caught me going 61. My, my, uh, my son caught me going 61 and 55. Grant, now Grant is the biggest rule follower in the world. He goes, dad, the speed limit is 55 and you're in government. I said, whether I'm in government or not, you're right. It's 55 for a reason. Because look, I, I teach young men, I coach young men, I teach young men and women. I can't expect them to obey one rule of mine if I don't obey the rules that are put before me to follow.
Yeah.
And.
Unless you're headed home from a late Taco Tuesday and you're barely holding on Randy. You're barely holding on.
I want to go back to an old show. Humby, don't play that. You know, I mean, it's just.
Tom, you gotta get there.
Uh, well, I mean, you know, I'm not going to lie and say I've never speak, you know, you know, but having said that, no, but having said that, you have to follow the rules. If you're, if you're going to be an enforcer of rules or if you're going to be in the case of a councilman, the maker of rules, because our job is not enforcement or administrative, it's legislative, then you have to be willing to follow the rules set before you. And, and I'm a firm believer in that. And that came from my parents as well.
Heck yeah. So let's, let's dive into this.
I like it.
Let's dive, let's get into it.
Let's dive.
So, so many times we, we hear people who are asked to be reelected, right? And I'm talking only about the incumbents here. And the question is, well, what did you do with the past four years? So let's talk about some of the stuff you were involved in the last four years.
I've been, been involved in a lot, I think. And, um, and if you want to know in detail, you can go to, you can.
We'll put the link in there.
Here we go. If you want to know in detail, and I'm, I'm not being cliched, but you can go to randyvice.com and promises made, promises kept. And I'll probably leave some out just talking right now.
Great site.
And anything that I talk about on council is not only Randy Weiss. It's, it's a great mayor and it's the other council people. We work as a team and but.
It's mostly Beth Lee. Let's be real.
That's true. Beth Lee's amazing. She is. As a matter of fact, the numbers I've got on this site about jobs creation and all this came from public records. Beth Lee works there and I went in and paid a public records request uh, for them and got those and she was able to provide them like that. And you know, that's, that's important.
Yeah, she's top notch.
She really is. But, but back to this, you know, we, one of the things that I talked about was first and foremost, uh, finishing the sports complex because it was, it was dead in the water.
Feathered a hat.
It was. And it was a, um, and I had been put on the committee toward the end, but man, it was not going well. And once I got elected, there was some legislation that redid the, the, the board. The city council appointed me as the council member.
Sure.
On the board at that point. And I guess due to a series of events, I became chairman about two months later. And since then we brought, we finished it. Uh, Mayor Taylor graciously, uh, provided the parking lot. Uh, and we have the Parks and Recreation Department staff, Philip Hollingsworth, Stacy Jones and several others. I don't want to keep naming and leave anybody off. They managed it. We brought in, and that, that number was from 2023. At that point, 55,000 people in the Rainbow City. And those are documented public safety numbers.
Heck yeah.
And you can, and that's, um, and they don't just come and yes, they come and they buy cokes and they eat at restaurants and things like that. But also they'll leave with an experience of Rainbow City, much like I did that night on the fire truck.
Sure.
And, and I'll be honest, people care about their kids and they see facilities. People do move for that. And not only that, you have businesses that come into town and they want to see the quality of life for their employees. And Rainbow City is abundant with that. And I think the sports complex and, and I hesitate to call it the soccer complex. We've had seven aside football out there, high school seven aside football with FCA. We've had adult flag football. We had Indian kite fighting, which was the coolest thing in the world.
Enunciate. You're enunciating this show.
Yeah, they, uh, they, they, they fly their kites and they, uh, and they, they try to cut each other's kite strings.
Chairman Leslie, were you there?
He was there. It was a, it was an amazing experience.
It was a different event. Although he's close to Murfreesboro.
But, but anyway, but we did have that. It was a great, so you know, it's a very, that's, I, I love the sports complex.
I'll never call it the soccer complex.
And, and it's okay. I love soccer. So it's okay to call it that, but I want to emphasize that there is, there, there's a lot else. There were a lot of other things going on out there.
Hey, uh, you're being, you know, this, this guy right there, Brett Davis, place five. He says, what's up, Coach Weiss?
How are you doing Brett?
That's a good dude.
He is a good.
He's a good South Side young man. So.
Jennifer McGriff also says good morning.
Good morning Jennifer.
Look at you knowing people.
Oh, yeah.
Logan Stills says, great guy right there. I'm, I'm, we're, I'm certain he's not talking about us.
Yeah, it's obviously you. Especially coming from Logan. It's coming from you. So, and, and that's a big economic impact into the city.
It is. That, that is, if, if there is a feather in my hat, and I don't like that term very often, because it's, that, that's probably what I'm known for. I went to Joe, I guess, second year in and I said, Joe, look, I got a degree in economics that I know, I understand industrial development, commercial development. I don't want to be known as the sports guy. He goes, why not? Because you're killing it. Or it's such, I don't want to put words into his mouth, but something like that. Why not be known as the sports guy? Uh, and you know, and, um, but it's one of those things where we do other things as well.
Sorry.
Must be some comments.
No, Brett's Oliver Smith, man. You, you, when he starts driving the ship, hang on. You never know where we're going.
But, uh, but I love that, but I also like the fact that all of us have worked together as a team to do the things that Rainbow City's done. Jeff Prince on the Challenger, uh, Centers Board. That's the board he's on. I'm on the sports complex. He's on Challenger Center. Clark is on, I think, every national board of cities known to man. He's.
Dude, that dude's climbing a ladder.
He really is. And so, you know, and of course, Anita, the water board. I think Jameson's on some police boards or sheriff's boards.
Who's on the water board?
Uh, Anita Bedwold. Uh, uh, one of the greatest ladies I know. She's a, a southern lady.
We're fans of hers.
She's, who's not a fan of Anita Bedwold.
But I.
You know, and then, uh, but so we all have our own, own areas that, but we're not in charge of the areas.
Sure.
Now with the sports complex, that is different because I'm the chairman of that authority, uh, and I do have, but October 25th, big news, we are integrating even more into Rainbow City. Uh, it's called fiduciary responsibility goes to the city.
Yep.
Which is a burden off me. I can go watch soccer games and get people to come in. Um, and we've all worked cooperatively to make that happen. It's, it's struggled financially early on, but now, uh, that's doing great. We also have a great treasurer, uh, lady you've probably never heard of, Rachel Taylor. Is our, uh, amazing.
Here's all I know. Y'all be careful. She's from a tower.
Does amazing job as our treasurer. And so it's, it's, uh, we, we've done a lot and, and, and I, and I keep saying we. It's not just the council, but the, the city employees, each and every one of them. And, and now of course, we're doing the, um, we're, we're turfing every baseball and softball field in Rainbow City.
Huge.
After that, we're redoing the track at Rainbow Middle, which is a city facility and, and turfing the, uh, field in the middle of that to be a soccer, football, whatever.
Multi-purpose.
Now, again, it's, people say, why are you spending all this money when we got potholes? Well, I promise you this, when you have a pothole and let us know, we do our best to make it right.
All right. Right here on Druid Park, as soon as you pull in, right there on the ride, it's right there. Right beside Debbie's house.
I'm right beside Debbie's house.
Annex our parking lot.
That's not a promise. Understand that.
I took it as a promise that this afternoon it's going to get taken care of.
We will do everything.
This afternoon, it's going to be, that's what I heard.
Sure. But no, you know, we, we will do our streets and sanitation, guys. Do a great job.
Amazing work.
Uh, Michael Stevens is phenomenal.
For sure, for sure.
Huey Woodard, those guys are just really good at what they do. Yeah. And so.
Kevin Moore just said, oh, here, vote Randy Weiss. You can't spell service without our vice.
Oh, wow.
Leave it up to Kevin Moore.
I love it, Kevin. Thank you. Kevin's one of my dear friends and a very talented individual.
That dude is. Kevin to lay down the track for your commercial.
You know, when you said that dude, that dude is a real crowd pleaser.
He, man, he tries to be.
As the song says.
I think he leaned up against, their backs leaned up against one another. Randy got shades on.
He just pulled down just a little bit. Heck, yeah. Set the mood, right?
And then you say that.
Just not Jason Cole's church because you can't dim the lights. That's a Baptist church.
You gotta hold a handle.
You know who's our newest sponsors watching?
You mean candidate for mayor? The county commissioner?
It is.
The right reverend? One of the best speakers I've heard in a while. That dude can speak.
Clean Chris.
Joey Statham is nice.
What's up? What I'm upset about right, I'm, we're going to hijack your show for a second because Joey, Joey Statham, don't tune in to watch us, but Coach Weiss is on. You tuned into watching?
That's exactly why.
That's hurtful, Joe. That's hurtful. Look at me, all my big friends are watching.
Joey's a great guy. Hey, Joey, how you doing? Good morning. The, um, you know, and it's one of those things where that, that, but we've also done the other stuff like, um, each council member's given access to like the community center and things of that nature. We all give our day to the Marinatha group, which is adults with disabilities.
They're awesome by the way.
That, if you haven't been to one of those events, you need to go. Chiho Sullivan does a phenomenal job with that and, uh, it's just those kinds of things are what we're here for.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of times people will say something like, well, what's your views on abortion? I'm pro-life, okay? But guess what? Rainbow City's not going to open an abortion clinic. I promise you that. But that's not an issue here. The issues are things like your potholes.
Yeah.
And what can we do for adults with disabilities and what kind of facilities we can provide for young people? Being honest, not to talk about this amazing new, uh, community center we're building with the swimming pool and the, and the splash pad, i.e. Clark Hopper. Good job, Clark. Uh, the splash pad, the amphitheater. Um, all of these things are group effort, but I've supported each and every one of them. Uh, I know some things have been said about people abstaining from things. Nobody abstains because you don't like it. You abstain because you legally have to.
Yeah.
Uh, for me, I'm not, not, I'm, I think every council person, I don't want to speak for them, or at least two of the other ones have abstained at times.
Yeah.
But with abstentions, we've had, I've been on council for five years. We've had 532 votes if I counted correctly. And I've, I've abstained four or five times. I think five, but I only could find four. So four out of five, I think a couple of other people, maybe two, three. But those are because let's say if we're giving, if we're donating something to the school system, I work for the school system.
Yeah.
The law says if it has any direct benefit to me or my employer or my family.
Which would make sense.
Then I have to legally abstain. And I can even abstain by saying I fully support this.
But.
But I cannot vote yet for it. And that's, that's clear. The law is clear on that. There's no gray area. Um.
Good thing you can read.
Well, no, yes. But, um, but again, I understand there's misunderstandings about that, that, but no.
Well, what you don't know, you don't know.
Well, what you know, you know, no, that's right. But, but I'll tell you this, I research every single Beth Lee. Again, I know she keeps coming up. She runs the city with Joe.
She does. She does.
But, you know, she sends us every resolution we're going to vote on, every ordinance we're going to vote on and everything in ample time to go over it and know exactly what, what we're voting on. And that's important.
Yeah. I got to see her just the other day. Uh, I was out getting, getting lunch at, uh, the community market, which is fantastic. It's an amazing event and.
That's when you got that smoked chicken.
I did. It was good too. That cabbage, oh, so good. But I was, um, I was noticing all the ladies, I guess it was Friday because they all had the Rainbow City shirts on and jeans, right? Something like, why, then I see Beth Lee in front of me at Jason, Chef Jason Dodd's truck. I said, Beth, who's running the city?
Get back in the office.
And she did this. I could do it from right here. She had her phone. So, uh, what, that's a great event too, by the way. Rainbow City is, is doing some cool things.
Andy does a phenomenal job with that. We, my dad participates in that occasionally. Right now, right now, we're watching him because of the heat. Because the heat, he actually went to, uh, the, um, communities, uh, market in Jacksonville last Saturday.
Okay.
Two in a row. I, um, my brother went with him one day and my son the other.
Okay.
Um, he did pretty well over there, but, uh, it's more shaded.
Those baskets are so cool.
But thank you.
And we still don't think you can make one. I mean, I, I got cash money.
Listen. Pictures of you making it.
It's like building pools and driving backhoes and running tractors. I can do every bit of it. That's especially.
You just choose not to.
I choose not to when I can avoid it. I actually got, I played, uh, okay, I don't want to get anybody in trouble, but I got to sit on one of the new, uh, pieces of equipment that the sports complex has.
Yeah.
Man, I said, wow, I could, it's air conditioned.
You could do some bad.
Back when I was running Bobcats and backhoes and bulldozers, there were no air, yeah, there was no air conditioning. So it's really, it's all that's air conditioned.
Cable TV.
Might as well be, might as well be.
Little quarter pipe in the back.
It's really neat.
Dude, what I love about his dad, uh, your, your dad is a, is a treasure, right? He's an absolute treasure. Uh, little hard of hearing, which cracking me up, you know, because he's trying to rip, you know, read lips or whatever and he, he says what he thinks he's. I love that dude.
How are you doing today? Thank you.
Yeah, it's awesome. Yeah, it's so good, man. He's got the biggest smile though. He's such a good dude.
And the bluest eyes. Uh, I, I heard one lady come up and say, your dad has the bluest eyes I've ever seen in my life. And so.
Yeah, he, um, he's a, he's a treasure, man.
And a- again, it's, it's great what Andy does out there. It brings the community together and people from outside the community. Joe said something on the show, his show a couple of weeks ago, I think about what, he's not just the mayor, the residents in Rainbow City. When people come into this city, we're responsible for it.
Yeah.
And you know, and, and I don't want to, that's a paraphrase of course, because again, I don't want to put words in anybody else's mouth, but it's true. We want, we want Rainbow City to be Rainbow City for our residents first and foremost, but also a place that anybody would want to live, uh, like I did. Um, and I think that's a benefit in me not being originally from here, because you've seen it from the outside, just what Rainbow City has to offer.
Yeah.
Well, not, not only do people want to move here, they, they want to open businesses here. So talk a little bit about what you've been involved in and what you've seen in your tenure with businesses.
Right now, as a councilman, people will call you and you just say, hey, here's, uh, Joel Garman's number. Here's Joe Taylor's number. But bringing businesses here is one of our jobs as far as, um, people know we're on council and they'll call and we put them in. Now, we don't go out and personally recruit businesses. That's not, we have people that do that. Now I will recruit as far as how you need to bring this to Rainbow City.
Sure, sure.
But as far as, but, um, since we've been on, on council, we've had over 90 new brick and mortar businesses. Again, that was 2020. That records request was in 2024, I believe. So there's probably been over a hundred now, over 1,100 jobs created.
That's huge.
And, and it is. And, and most of them, I'm not going to lie, our service industry jobs are not going to pay a lot, but we are having, you know, S M T sale coming. We have the auto auction coming. Those will bring a tremendous, uh, a number of well-paying jobs. With that, there's infrastructure situations with roads and streets and things that will have to be addressed and, and we will as a council and, and, and the city offices will address those issues to make it better for it. Cause it's also on the same road as our educational recreational corridor. Hey, we got the best police department in the state of Alabama. They'll handle that and they'll handle it well. Uh, Camp Yansey, those guys do an amazing job and, and the same with all the other first responders, fire and EMTs and all those guys. But, you know, it leads us to that. Another question is what counselors can and can't do.
It's a great statement.
Our councilmen. Oh, counselors, I'm, I'm that too, maybe as a, as a teacher, but what council people can and can't do.
Sure.
Um, we do not have authority over city employees. It's actually a violation of the law. If I were to go up to John Doe, who's in charge of cutting grass here and say, hey, you got to do this. I'm a city council. That's against the law.
Not in, not in Michigan, it's not.
There's one person. Look, there's one person in Rainbow City that has that authority and that's Mayor Joe Taylor.
The Joe Taylor.
And, uh, and, but our department heads have a lot of authority as well. But having said that, there's, there's a belief that council people can tell other people what to do. That's not the case. We're not executives. We're not administrators. We're legislators and we represent the people who have put us in office. Rainbow City is a city of under 12,000 people, but more than 10,000 people. We're on the crisp of having districts. We don't have districts now.
Close.
Every, right, 12,000.
Yeah.
Every council person represents the entire city. And that's, that's very good and it's also a unique set of challenges. People are already saying, well, you know, you're not in my district. We, we don't have districts. There's also a situation, you know, where as working at large, I have to be familiar with the entire county, not just Druid Park, uh, Rainbow Estates, whatever, you know, and, and available. uh, Rainbow Estates, whatever, you know, and, and available. My phone number's out there. It's on randyvice.com if you need it. Two five six three two eight forty-four oh six. But what I will do is put you in touch with the right people. I will be more than happy to discuss it with you, but in the end, there's a process that has to go. And, and that process goes through City Hall. Having said that, if I felt, and I never have in the city, but if I felt City Hall wasn't doing it, I would do my best to go and be your advocate.
Sure.
But in general, our government represents our people. I, I used the term last time I was on there, politico. A politico is somebody who is elected to represent the people that they represent, but use their own good judgment in executing this, that, and the other. So I think that's important. So, you know, I would never say, hey, call me, I'll get it done. That can't happen. I'm one vote on the city council. And one thing I'm not gonna do to you is lie to you. The um, but I will do my best to represent you before the city council. And that's, that's the promise I can make and, and that I will always do that. Since I um, I'm on promises, another thing we promised to do is work on the flooding. Now, it still floods in Rainbow City, obviously. It will flood in Rainbow City until the end of time.
Sure.
But our streets and sanitation, again, I'm giving them a lot of dibs, have done a tremendous job in controlling so much of that. And again, that's the leader, leadership of the mayor. There's no city councilman out there on a back hole or running a, or running a uh.
Didn't you say you were, you were just on a back hole?
But not, not cleaning. But uh, but, but having said that, you know, it's one of those things where we have to understand the way things works. But what we can do is at every work session, it looks like when you watch a city council meeting, we agree on everything. By the time it gets to the meeting we do, now the work session, which is open to the public as well, that's where we'll say, hey, wait a minute, don't we need to fix this? And why do we need to fix this? And, and, and again, he's, he's probably sick of me talking about it, but the mayor does an excellent job of explaining, this is why we need to do this. This is what's going on.
Sure.
This is why we can't do this. Uh, a lot of things you've probably noticed will be on the agenda. It'll come up and everybody sits there and then they say, okay, there's no move, we'll move to the next item. That doesn't mean that we're against what that person is asking for. It means that we've looked at it and we legally can't do it. So it dies for lack of emotion. If we said, if we just all voted, and somebody brought it up and we all voted no, then that would be we're against it. We're not against it. We're, it's a situation where we can't do it. And, and that happens sometimes.
Yeah. Well, to be fair, Jameson Jenkins tells people what to do because he has a gun. Investigator Jenkins.
Hey, hey, listen, he's a law enforcement officer and has ever, and, and you know, and uh.
Hey, uh, you wanna read the, the last Danny Starnes?
Uh, Danny Starnes says, Randy is right. We retired there due to a police officer going way beyond his duties twenty years ago. I'll nev-, I'll never forget, he, he solved our issue. I have the same praises for our fire department as well.
Yeah.
Thank you, Danny. I agree a hundred percent. Thank you. Um, and again, this is, this is not just our two stories. It's a lot of people's stories.
Yeah.
The people out there wearing those uniforms or wearing those uh, polo shirts with reg department, they represent our city. They're the ambassadors of our city. And they do a phenomenal job. Can't leave out animal control, uh, can't leave out Ms. Brooks at the library. People forget that the library, what they're doing this summer.
They do a lot.
I had a blessing to be able to provide pizzas uh, for the children's youth thing, uh, the um, the end of the, I, I forget what it's called, but anyway, it was a lot of fun. I, I wasn't able to attend, but seeing the pictures and everything.
He didn't brought us no pizza. How about pizza company just right there?
Hey, but you also did, did bring me coffee.
Yeah, absolutely.
By the way, shout out to Kapal Coffee.
Come on.
Shout out to Kapal Coffee. I have a, I, I got a free bag at the community market the other day. It's, it's delicious, but.
Yeah, I noticed I didn't get no royalties from that. You gave it away.
No, I gave you exactly what it was.
There's been a lot of stuff said around the country, there, you know, there's been a lot of stuff said around the country about libraries.
Sure.
Community libraries and what our kids can be exposed to. Let me tell you, I would let any of my grandchildren from the, from the four-year-old to the thirteen-year-olds go into our public library and feel confident that they would, they would have no issues finding
Agreed.
what they needed without finding things they don't need to see.
What a safe environment.
And, and, and that's the li-, the librarians, the people who work in the library do a phenomenal job. Things will get by.
Sure.
You know.
Oh, yeah.
Dora the Explorer may be misspelled and put in the wrong place and it may be in a, you know.
Not like Ray Freeman could tell.
But these guys, these guys.
From the summer reading program here in Rainbow City.
But these guys do a phenomenal job. These ladies do a phenomenal job of making sure that our children are protected.
Yeah.
And still have so much access to information. One of the things about the library, Clark Hopper is on the library board, if I'm not mistaken. Or he sits as an observer on the library board, but.
I mean, naps.
But having said that, they have a genealogy, but you know, you, you guys are familiar with ancestry dot com.
Sure.
Well, let's say you don't wanna spend the, the twenty-two bucks a month for ancestry.
We know somebody that found their wife on that side.
Wow. Oh, my goodness.
Do we?
Uh, I just caught that. But anyway, not mine.
No, 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 no.
But on ancestry dot com, you know, you have to pay to use it. The library has a library subscription that anybody can go in. You can't take, you can't access it remotely. But you can bring a notebook, research your entire family tree with even uh, the full database that comes to ancestry dot com. You can walk right into our public library with a library card and do that.
With the library card, I mean.
We have something similar with the schools, you know, we have something similar with the schools, but it's, it's a really good program and, and you know, tons of other things besides just books in our library. They do a phenomenal job with that. And I will always be a champion of our library.
So Ray Freeman's asking where you can get that kind of power card. Hey, you gotta be this tall to ride this ride.
You can get it at Man Church, uh, if you guys wanna bring y'all's church.
Sunday, Sunday.
Sunday at five.
See you there, Ray.
Yeah.
Uh, good question here, uh, Councilman Weiss, when going around, um, hold on, it went away. From going around talking to people in the community, what has been uh, your biggest takeaway from citizens? So is there some, there are issues coming up or?
That's a, that's a great question. Um, you know, we talked about the, the, the industry versus community traffic and things like that. That's come up a lot. And, and the way I deal with that is I go to the people in charge of that and, and find out. That's where I found out about the, how we're going to address it. That's been very important. One of the things that comes up a lot, which we have almost no control over, is the water board situation. Uh, and that's any utility and that's any city, anywhere. Um, we have an independent water board. Uh, councilwoman, uh, Bedwell is on it. But having said that, as city council, we have no real authority over the water board. It's an independent, similar to the postal service as an independent part of the US government. You know, postal workers are considered different than regular government workers.
Oh, we know. Your stepdad is one.
Was one.
He's, man, why would you go through the postal year postal?
But what we will do, you know, we do appoint members to the water board, so we do have some level of responsibility there.
Sure.
And, but we'll communicate your concerns, but things like that, utilities and safety, and tons of recreation questions, all good. You know, when are, when are we gonna get a splash pad? From the first day of the election that came up, splash pad was big. The um, when are we gonna get the base, you know, and the reason we're turfing the baseball fields, and I think Mayor Taylor explained this, is the fact that we don't have the practice fields.
That's exactly right.
And.
Yeah.
With turf, usage doesn't wear turf out very much. I mean, it, it just, it does not. It, it, and in many ways, you don't have to, I don't wanna use the word flood, that's not the right word, but you don't have to stir up the turf as much when it's used more. So that way, these fields, which have been incredible fields, Philip and those guys make, when, when they were grass, they were great. And now that they're turf, they'll be better, but now you can practice on them, not just play games on them. And that, that's huge.
Huge in this area. As many sports teams.
And we have a, a great, the Couso League's a great recreational program. We have a great, um, we have great travel teams here in baseball and softball. And like I say, my oldest son, uh, baseball, back when baseball could pay for your college, baseball, along with academics, paid for his college.
Partial scholarships now.
Oh, yeah. Uh, thirty-two percent. But, but having said all of that, you know, it's, those are the kind of questions. You do hear a lot of that. You'll get phone calls about that.
Well, here's a question from, for someone who lives in North Carolina. Jeff, you wanna read Kurt's?
Let me get back to his.
Question.
Thank you, Brooke Kurt. That's, he, speaking of a beautiful part of the country where he lives.
Asheville, North Carolina, beautiful.
Um, all the way from Asheville, he says, okay, coming from someone who has lived all over the world, is Rainbow City a small town that rolls up the sidewalks at five PM or are there things to do, actually do in Rainbow City? That's a good question.
That's a great, that's a great question. And, and the answer is not really, but sometimes.
Well, the answer is Rainbow City don't have sidewalks.
We, right, oh, whoa, 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 whoa. Have you seen the new sidewalks? They're going up near uh, Rainbow Middle School.
Uh, yes.
That will eventually link all the way to uh.
So we do have sidewalks or they?
You ain't gonna walk them.
They're right out, right out, right down Lumley and then turn right on Kenzie and see what we're accomplishing out there with the.
I was on Lumley.
Is that gonna go to New Downtown?
It's going to turn, but.
Can't wait to have, do a Christmas parade.
We are working on sidewalks, okay?
Yeah.
The um, but to answer your question, there are things to do and the, the city provides a lot of that. We had the drone show.
Which is phenomenal.
We had, uh, you know, we had movie nights last year in October. I'm sure we'll have another moon, movie, um, movie night. Not a moon show, but uh.
That's a different.
So the city does have the, to answer your question, it was a great one. We do, the city does a lot of things like that. We do have some great restaurants and, and they stay open, you know, and, and they, there's something for everybody. We have Mexican, we have Asian. We have American, um, we have Union Jack. We have Union Jack, which is great. Uh, it's, it.
You know what today is? Most of their steak? I'm not gonna say. It's a, it's a great sandwich steak. Churmit churi.
But I don't wanna leave anybody off. Uh, we have great pizza restaurants and Little Caesar's and Alabama Pizza Company, Pizza Hut.
Did you just put Little Caesar's and Alabama Pizza Company in the same sentence?
They're different. Look, 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 they're equal but different in my opinion.
Doing Randy Weiss.
Yeah, well, they're equal but different.
Can you go, can you go to Little Caesar's and get a cannoli?
Actually, you can go.
You should look in that camera and apologize to Alabama Pizza Company right now. Right now, Randy Weiss.
Look, I love Alabama Pizza Company. I love Little Caesar's, I love Pizza Hut. And I'm, I'm not that guy that says I love everybody. But I love pizza. You know, and I love lunchroom pizza, you know, whatever.
What's better than that?
And the little sausage, you know, little.
Did you put it all on top of front?
But the folks at Little Caesar's are really good. And I wanna tell you why. To our city, they, you know, they donate tons of stuff.
No, we're thankful for it.
And Ma, uh, Ma Dabasi and those guys are, are great. And as are the people at Alabama Pizza, what they do. So, you know, I know you're, we're playing, but all of these restaurants serve their own group of people and they, they help our community. And we do have um, some other restaurants. I don't, I'm sure I've left some out.
Oh, there's so many. You can't.
What's a good one?
You got the new, the new pizza, the, the pizza game room. Bronz, oh, Bronz is amazing. Bronz is amazing.
Rainbow, hey, hey Kurt, here in Rainbow City, Sonic is where the people hang out after, after five o'clock. Those kids, a good, safe environment and they allow the kids safely to hang out there.
But now, and listen to, one of the good things I can explain to you, from North Carolina, you'll understand this as well. Rainbow City has a niche of things that we have, but you can go right up the road to Southside, or right across the bridge to Southside for events and to Gadsden for events and Atala for events. So there's something to do all the time within, within twenty minutes of your house.
Yeah.
It's a, that is one of the things, Etowah County in general is, is thriving in that area. And so, you know, we don't, we don't restrict ourselves to the borders of Rainbow City. Um, my church is unique in that the parking lot where I park is in Rainbow City.
That's right.
And the church building, or at least most of it, is in Gadsden.
So the pew you sit on, is it Rainbow City? You sit in the Rainbow City pew?
I sit on the Rainbow City pew, that's right, yeah. Uh, five rows up, actually. And by the way, we have a great coffee shop.
No, we don't, hey.
It's, I need to get Kapal Coffee. I'll try to remind him to do that.
You got, at your church, you got that Jamie Grant coffee.
Oh, man, Jamie's something else, isn't it?
Hello, sir Jamie.
That Little Burton coffee. Hey, thanks for the prayers, Jamie. Seriously.
He's a good dude, man.
I like him. I don't even want to.
Yeah, I know. It's like you tried to not like him, but you just like. Oh, I'm glad you mentioned Jamie, because you know Jamie's very active in the military wise. August, which starts tomorrow, is Purple Heart Month.
Yep.
And you know, you can't have too many military holidays, let's be real.
I agree with that.
Whether it's Veterans Day, Memorial Day, Flag Day, but to have the whole month. Now, there is a Purple Heart Day, I think it's August seventh, but don't hold me to that. But it's about people who were either killed or injured in military service. And man, that brings it home. We could not, in, in so many countries, we would have to lock all the doors if we were sitting here doing this podcast.
Sure.
And running VPNs and everything else, because our military's done such an amazing job of protecting those freedoms that we hold so dear.
Right.
And I will always, you know, if I got an air on the side of supporting anybody, it'll always be the US military.
No doubt.
Veterans, um, and, and I think that's true of every councilman and probably every candidate.
Sure.
But I, but I wanna get that out, but, but having said that.
You wanna, being. Kevin Moore has something for you.
Okay.
Well, the other question too, you, you see that question that says.
This is scary.
Coach being a soccer coach.
Coach being a soccer coach.
Coach being a soccer coach, do you feel that soccer is bringing communism to the United States?
I, I wrote an article, listen, I wrote an article about, um, I wrote an article.
Destroying our country.
Okay, let me, let me tell you.
I'm just reading comments.
Uh, listen, I, I love soccer. I love football. Football, of all of the sports to watch and go attend, I'm, I'm a huge American football fan. You know you're a soccer guy when you call it American football.
You know you're a soccer guy when George Catanado jumps on.
You know that's right.
But, but let me say, oh, amazing. But, but having said that, I wrote an article about ten or fifteen years ago that I just updated. I'm gonna kinda re-release. Uh, it's called My Southern Soccer Story. When I started, it was called Communist Kickball or football.
Communist Kickball.
Or football for sissies, or, or a sport that other kids couldn't play.
It's rough.
Now, I'm gonna tell you something. Right now, we have as good athletes in this sport and I coach all the sports. I've coached all of them.
Have you, you ever won a state championship in soccer?
Yes, sir, I have. I have. I've been a part of a club that won state championship and also our high school team, Southside High School, won a state championship this year.
Heck, yeah. Congratulations again.
Thank you. Those are a phenomenal group of kids. Look, every football coach knows this analogy and it's true. If it's football or football or whatever, it's not X's and O's, it's Jimmy's and Joe's.
It's the devil.
And it's, it's, it's the kids, but as, as leaders, it's our job to prepare those kids to get the best out of what they can do.
Yeah.
These, these kids have really excelled. And it, this was a bittersweet, because my son graduated. I've coached these kids at some level since they were eight, nine, ten years old, the majority of them.
And they were still successful.
Right, and never out of season, you know, never out of season, always correctly, uh, because again, the thing I said about the rules.
Sure.
But uh, having, having said that, yeah, it's, I, I know that was a funny question. I know that. But it is funny that um, I, I saw an article on some nut website about the soccerfication of America. No, listen.
That's awesome.
Football, gridiron, American football will always be king here and we all love it.
No question.
But I wanna tell you something. The only thing that offends me now, and, and I'm a big baseball, I'm a big, well, I mean, about, about the soccer thing. Is.
Thanks for clarifying.
Thank you so much for letting me clarify that.
He needs to meet with your pastor.
But the uh, is this, the comment, first of all, I love baseball. And by the way, we've got a great baseball coach at Southside.
What's his name?
Kevin Vincent.
Never heard of him.
Rainbow City resident. Rainbow City resident, Kevin Vincent. He's amazing. But anyway. And that's one of the things as a councilman, you know, I've been able to arrange a meeting with him and Joe over some things. It's worked out really well and uh, Steve Smith at Westbrook, who is a uh.
I vaguely remember.
He's a, he was a former colleague of mine and we coached football together at, at Couso High School.
You taught him everything he knows, didn't you? I would be taking credit for it. I would.
That guy was a, he's, he's a lot younger than I am and he, he brought a wealth of knowledge to, to our staff.
He don't look younger than you.
But I've arranged meetings with him about softball, you know, and things. So we um.
His wife's a fantastic softball coach.
Rachel.
Dude, she's a, was a beast.
Yeah, she could ball.
But, but, but having said all of that, the only thing I get upset about when people talk about soccer is I, I cannot stand the term minor sport.
Minor sport?
I know, you, you'll say, well, they got the.
Baseball's a minor sport.
I've never heard of the minor sport, uh, uh, you hear a, uh, the, um, a non-revenue sport.
Right, but see, and that's, that's completely wrong.
Not at Southside.
Completely wrong, not at Southside. No, we, we, we play in front of five hundred people a lot of times. The, uh, it looks like there's not a lot of people there, because we're in a stadium designed for seven thousand.
Right, sure.
But, but having said that, you know, we, we have great revenue, the, uh, have the, a great fan base, as do most of the sports at Southside.
Every sport is, hey, Southside people, say what you want, they support their programs, their fans.
Our athletic director, Angie Rebus, our principal, Julie Tucker, all of these folks are very supportive.
One out of two in there.
And when you're talking, hey, no, I'm not gonna go there, you know, but, um, we have a great, a great administrative staff and a great, uh, athletic staff.
You do?
And I, I can't shout out enough about that.
And you have Jason Bozeman, who's my favorite.
He's amazing.
Yeah.
And the, um.
He's got that growl when he comes.
He does, he's so good.
Yeah. And, and we've had nothing but complete and total support since I've been there.
Heck yeah.
Chris, real quick, I don't know what, how much time we got left, but, but what brought me here, I was teaching in Georgia, driving an hour every day, living here in Rainbow City, coaching in Georgia. And I'm driving home and I honest to goodness fall asleep at the red light, right past Twin Bridges, the one you turn right to go.
We've all fallen asleep at that one.
And again, I'm driving an hour there and an hour back, and the phone rings and wakes me up. How my foot didn't come off the brake and get killed, I don't know. And it was Chris Whittingham, he was the principal at Southside High School.
Love Chris.
And he said, hey, how you doing? Good to see, we'd seen each, we went to church together, and he goes, you know anybody that can teach US history and coach soccer? And I said, not off the top of my head, he said, I'm talking about you.
But he was asleep though, you didn't know, you were sleeping.
And he said, I said, Chris, I need another year, I had twenty-nine in Georgia. And he said, go home and do the math, check your, because, because we'd love to have you. And I'm paraphrasing, because this is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Eight years ago, or nine years ago. And, you know, the most worn out term in the world is it was a god thing.
Is that worn out?
No, it can be, especially when it's used for things that aren't god things. And so, when I say worn out, used, that was a god thing.
Yeah.
Cause I would've killed somebody. I would've probably put my foot off the brake and ran right in front of traffic or killed, you know.
Yeah.
Or I could've lost my life. That phone ringing, and I, and that, cause we went in the state final a year before in Rome. And I'm going like, so, but. I investigated, the money worked out great, uh, I can drive ten minutes instead of fifty-five minutes to work.
But then you gotta spend a lot more money going to get your lottery tickets, so you gotta.
Scratch off, yeah, maybe, but, um, but it was one of those things where, that was a god thing, I have no doubt, and, and I.
Hey, Chris is a good dude. That was a good dude to work for.
He's one of the, he's an amazing person.
Yeah, I agree.
And again, and, and I'm saying this about every principal I've worked for, and I've had in my thirty-seven, thirty-seven years of teaching. I've had support by all of them.
Administration matters.
Because they're educators. You can't be a principal without being a teacher. And to be a teacher, you have to have a calling. Again, overused. But you mentioned earlier why I didn't carry on my dad's pool company, even though two of my sons work in this swimming pool industry. Because I didn't have a calling for that.
I just figured you didn't wanna work outside.
Hey, in this kinda weather, I would not argue with you.
No way.
Hey, let's get to Kevin Moore's question, by the way, cause I want you to, I want you to chime in on this.
Are you talking about the?
I thought he had something about the communist questions.
About, no, 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 about soccer, about Sonic.
About Sonic.
Okay.
Speaking of Sonic, half their menu boards do not work and has not worked. Can we get Sonic corporate off their rear ends? He said another word.
Kevin, you, you, you just need to call Sonic. I mean, I mean, listen.
But you're, you're a councilman, yeah.
Uh, no, actually, he lives in Southside, so, so they've got an election going on over there and you can call and find out, um.
I, I don't think Kevin's been there in a while, because they actually moved the ones that didn't work, that's where you park to get your to-go stuff.
Exactly.
So he hasn't been there.
One of them, one of them, uh, number four, I may or may not have something to do with knocking that one off.
Kevin is a dear friend of mine, he's a dear friend of mine, I love him to death. Having, having said that, uh, one of my other dear friends, Shane Elsbury. Calls, uh, Kevin Granddaddy Grumpy Pants online, and, you know, and that's, and that, I'm not gonna say there's truth to that, but, you know.
Have you ever had to have been in a, a, a quiet setting with Kevin Moore and him have to whisper something to you?
Let me say that, uh, no, he generally doesn't to me, he's, he's got a voice.
Good.
But I'll say that, I'll take that, because nothing bothers me more than to see adults lean over and whisper into other adults' ears.
He ain't gonna do that.
I'm just, you know, I will call you out, I'll say.
Hey Jeff, let me tell you this secret.
Or, or lean over.
He can't whisper at.
Oh, or, or lean over, I'll actually say, that's rude, you know, and so Kevin's not gonna be, he's gonna, everybody in the room's gonna hear it.
Yes, you're right.
Sonic does have a, a great breakfast burrito, by the way.
Do they?
Yeah. They used to have, they used to have peppers and onions one, they took that away, but it was really good.
He is, he's asking that question jokingly, but at the same time, okay, at the same time, there are people who think that we can control what goes in Rainbow. We can control what goes in Rainbow Plaza, or we can make Union Jacks stay open all day, or we can.
I can get behind that.
Or, or we can, oh, it's great food, I could too, but that's their choice. But, you know, this is a free country with free enterprise.
Yeah.
And that was one of the things I ran on was property rights. I'm a strong believer in nuisance abatement, but at the same time, this, this country is founded. Thomas Jefferson, in the Declaration of Independence, said, "Life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness." But.
If I squint, you do like Matt Butler.
But when you read, when you read, thank you.
Our people are sorry.
It's a great neighbor. When you, when you, when you read John Locke, who Jefferson paraphrased in that, it's life, liberty, and pursuit of property. Uh, we, that's what separates us from communist countries and, and extreme socialist countries. And we, as a city, we don't manage, other than through zoning. If you come in and you obey our ordinances and fulfill all the requirements, and you're not doing something that's illegal or hurtful, you have a right to operate. And, and that's, that's the way it is, and there's no, you don't, we would love to see, by the way, a lot of things come to Rainbow Plaza, a lot of things come to, to every. Strip mall we have in town.
Careful.
And, and they do happen, you know, things do come that are great, have, have a lot of new businesses, but at the same time, we don't control what goes in. And then somebody said, well, you can deny them a permit, not legally, if they're within the constrictions of our ordinances and our regulations, and, and, and that's what you want. Look, Ronald Reagan said it best, when somebody says, I'm with the government and I'm here to help you. Uh, run.
Don't trust it.
Uh, but, but we are, that, that's not exactly true at the municipal level.
Sure, sure.
We're the lowest level of government, but at the same time, we're the ones that's closest to the people. And someone said.
The vacant lot where the house burned next to Matt Butler, can I put a double white as long as that has a skirt?
Oh boy. To answer that question, we have passed, we have passed several zoning regulations that limit. Look, by the way, nothing wrong with mobile homes.
No, no.
I've lived in a mobile home in my time. Having, having said that, there's places you can put mobile homes and places you can't. Roseland Plantation is one that you can't.
Unfortunate. Kevin, Kevin Moore said, he called Sonic and it's no response. That's the smartest thing Sonic ever did, was not engage with Kevin Moore.
Look at his number, blah.
Hey, uh, this gets a little bit serious, I probably, we don't do a lot of seriousness, but, um, a, a, and let's talk as a group, as a group, for the past five years. This council and led by the mayor and just being led by Beth Lee, uh, you guys have done some amazing, amazing things. Um, and you guys wanna keep that going. What's some of the stuff that, that's forthcoming, stuff you've been working on that we're gonna see come to fruition in the next?
Not just what you've done for me lately, right?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
We're wide, we're widening, uh, four eleven between the intersection and Lonely. We are completing the community center we talked about.
Heck yeah.
The, um, the thing that keeps coming up is partnership with schools. We're gonna continue expanding that partnership.
Including a, a new school here, including a high school here in Rainbow City? I may have just threw that question out myself.
No, that, that's perfectly all right. Um, I am, I am for Rainbow City High School if we can afford it, but I'm not for raising your taxes to do it. What you're more than likely going to see is a Etowah County High School eventually.
That's right.
Um, that will, could be located in Rainbow City on the educational recreational corridor, with Southside expanded as, as another, it would, it would still probably be a Southside Rainbow City High School. But located in Rainbow City, that's a possibility. I'm not speaking for Dr. Cosby.
Right.
Nor anyone else, but that's one of the possibilities. There's other possibilities out there, but this is all dependent upon growth. It's all dependent upon population increases. Southside, if I read right, was growing at one point two percent, we're growing at two point four percent. Now, again, these are numbers, you can, everybody's numbers are different, but if that continues.
Mostly made up.
If that continues, we probably logistically won't be able to just have one high school.
That's right.
Uh, that's one of the things I like about Alabama in general, we don't always think Dylan need to have these mega schools. There are some, Hoover, Spain Park. Uh, Gaston City's a very large school as well. There's nothing wrong with those, but in, in Alabama, there's, you know, but in, in Alabama, there's not generally a push for larger schools.
Georgia, there is.
Oh, yes.
Houston County and North Cobb and, yeah, Buford.
Coaching in Georgia.
Sixty-three million dollar football stadium in, in Buford, Georgia.
When I was coaching in football in Georgia, we were two A, so was Carrollton.
Yeah.
Now, a two A in Georgia is a six A here.
Yeah.
So was Carrollton, so we graduated two hundred and twenty people and they graduated five hundred and eighty.
Yeah.
At the time. Now, that's changed a lot. Now, there's six or seven As in Georgia and they've got them divided up.
It's weird.
Public and private has done different, which I like and it would solve a lot of the problems. Public and private schools can play each other, but at the same time, there are separate, uh, championship divisions.
Yeah.
Private schools can choose not to participate in their division and participate in the public division, but when they do, they choose to go up. They don't, and, and, and again, I've, and I'm, I've got a unique perspective, because I've had a child play football in a private school. A child played baseball in a private school, a son played soccer at a public school, um, the school that I'm at. Both, there's a place and room for both forms of education.
That's right.
And both forms of athletics, and there doesn't have to be this tension that exists sometimes, and it's usually from outside.
Yeah.
You know, I, like I said.
That's fair.
At one time, I'm coaching a soccer game with my eighth grade son on the sideline and my twelfth grade son playing for the other team. We were playing Westbrook.
Well, you knew where the weak spot was.
For real.
Wow.
The eighth grader at that point.
I, I, I admitted this at athletic banquet, but, you know, we were up, we were playing Westbrook, we were up seven to nothing, and, and my son Will actually gets a breakaway for Westbrook. And there was a daddy part of me saying, you know, this doesn't matter, score.
Yeah.
But then I was so tickled to death when the keeper took it off his foot.
There was a coaching opportunity.
It was, you know, so, um.
Speaking of coach.
Nate Smith.
One of our favorite, Coach Nate Smith.
Randy, what's going on, Scoop?
That's a good dude right there.
He's a phenomenal.
Yeah, man.
And i- if you wanna know anything about a weight room, this man knows his way around it better than anybody I know.
I know my way, I know my way around it too, I know how to get around it without having to go in.
Scoop and Chad Phillip, you know Chad Phillips at Westbrook, you know, those guys know their stuff.
Yeah, for sure.
And Scoop is just like a phenomenal part of our staff.
A Larry Williams at Kusa?
For all of our.
Athletic.
And I don't really know him, but I've heard good things about him. But, um, but having said this, you know, Scoop doesn't just help football. Coach Nate Smith helps all the sports, and that's, that's important.
And I, his son can spin the frickin' ball.
Now, where's he, where's he playing college?
Shorter Universe.
Shorter, yeah, 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 he's.
For my former assistant, Zach Morrison, who's the head coach at Shorter.
From St. Bartabell?
Different one, that was a different one, he didn't get there.
Zach Morrison, so he's from, he's from, uh, the Atlanta area, but he came and was one of my assistants at Kusa when I was defensive. Uh, I was coaching linebackers and defensive ends and special teams, and Zach got on the staff and he was working under me, and now he's the head college football coach.
How about that? Um, Dixon Morris just signed, uh, he's playing linebacker, defensive end at Shorter.
At Shorter?
Yeah, that's, that's Swain's son.
Really?
Yeah, he's, he's coaching at Pepperell now.
It is an amazing small school.
Yeah.
Playing in Division Two, and they're a Division Three population school, they're playing up in the Gulf South Conference.
Yeah, man.
Uh, they're.
His boy can play some ball.
And, and there, yes, he can, and to tell you what, the Shorter care is not just about their athletic development, but their spiritual development as well.
Maybe even a little more of the spiritual side.
We can't say enough about that. And that's one of the things that, you know, that kinda irks me when people talk about, well, public schools aren't, okay, let me tell you something. Every school I've worked at, every teacher pretty much has a Bible on their desk. Now, you know, we respect the fact.
You're not gonna go to Southside and tell them they can't live for Jesus, but, oh, please.
No, look, let me be the first to tell you, see you at the pole, FCA meetings, Brian Manceman does a great job with that, shout out to Coach Mance. But having said all of that.
I'm out.
Freedom of religion, you know, I respect one hundred percent the rights of the, the players and the students of other faiths. We had, uh, three Muslims on our team and during Ramadan. During Ramadan, look, during Ramadan, these kids can't eat or drink from sunup to sundown.
Hydration.
And then we have a playoff game.
Oh, Lord.
Uh, but you know what, it, and they even have, they have an exception they could take, but none of them do. But, so we have dates on our sidelines.
That, yeah, man, if, if.
But to me, that's what a Christian does.
Sure.
You respect other people.
Sure.
And hope they'll see Jesus in you.
Alright.
And, and, you know, but having said that, these guys, these students are amazing, we respect them. Uh, I can share my faith with anybody that asks, that's the key. No, I can't push my faith on anybody else, and I wouldn't want somebody pushing their faith. On, on, on my kids either. And so, but having said that, we respect one another.
Yeah.
And we were, and that's the same way about a lot of other things, but, um, we continue to do that. And so I, 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 I do take exception with some statements about, uh, public schools being hotbeds of liberalism and wokeness, not around here.
Yeah.
Not, not in the Alan Cosby kingdom, and, and I'm sure it's the same in the other schools as well. We, we have every right to express ourselves. Now, again, within the confines of the Constitution.
Sure. And not to correct you, but it's Dr. Cosby?
Yes, it is, Dr. Al, right. And it's kinda funny, because even in informal settings, I call him Dr. Cosby.
He would never even say anything.
He would care less, not that, he'd care less.
In informal settings, I'll, I'll, I'll say, Dr. Cosby, because he looks funny, like, hey, we're eating, you know, like at a soccer event or something, but still. Hey, if I ever get my doctorate and I'm thinking about it, even though I'm sixty, uh, my wife's gonna call me doctor. I mean, I think you, you, that's something that you earn.
Cold day in hell, the wife calls you doctor.
The, uh, you'd be surprised.
If they be a little colder.
Girl! Hey, but listen.
Doctor Randy!
But no, look, no. But, uh, but I, I do wanna say that, you know, when somebody earns a doctorate.
Sure.
Allison Helled just got her doctorate, she's Dr. Helled. One of my students asked me last year, she's our FFA teacher and our act teacher.
That's cool.
She said, I gotta go see Miss Helled? I go, no, you go see Dr. Helled. I said, and you call her that.
You can go to.
And you know. H E A L D, Helled.
Helled.
But she's phenomenal, by the way. We do a great job with FFA, it's a phenomenal program.
Councilman, look at that camera right there and tell your constituents why you want them to reelect you and why they should.
Okay, I want you to reelect me, I'm Randy Vice, because I think I've done everything I said I'm going to do. And we're gonna continue to grow in Rainbow City, we're also going to continue to represent you in the best way possible. And when I say we, it's a family effort. My, my, uh, family's one hundred percent behind me in everything that I do, but more importantly, I think I'm with no reflection on my opponent, who I. First of all, I shout out to anybody who is brave enough to run for office.
Sure.
Uh, because it entails a lot, but I'm, I'm definitely the most qualified. I, I have ran businesses, I have worked at the Gulf State Steel Mill. I've worked, um, in my dad's pool company. I'm now an educator with a degree in government, which is what I do. And, um, I think I'm the best person for the job, and I'm confident that if you read my resume and the things that I've accomplished, and that you will see the same thing. Now, I also want you to understand, it's very hard for me to say that, the Bible's clear, don't brag on yourself, let others do it. And I'm not bragging on myself, I'm bragging on the fact that, or I'm pointing out the fact that I'm the most qualified for this job. And again, no reflection on my opponent, who, who's probably a very well-qualified, good individual, seems like a great family man and businessman. But having said all that, vote for me if you want Rainbow City to continue to grow in the way it needs to grow. If you want Rainbow City to continue to be the place that others, don't just drive through, but drive through, slow down and stop, shop, buy, and then eventually decide to live in. I'm the person to vote for.
How about that?
Well, it's.
I thought he was going to stop, drop, shut them down.
I thought, but he didn't.
I don't know, I thought he was doing DMX.
Hey, we got a, a great comment here, we, we don't wanna, uh, we wanna talk about this, we're saving, because Brett Tyler Smith, who, man, he's a, we, we love the dude, he's a, he's a sponsor. Uh, he's trying to get everybody to come out to the venue and let him put a temporary tattoo in, in, in.
Emblem Credit Union.
I, I was going somewhere different, but thank you for saving me. Uh, he's there hanging out, uh, great event at the venue, you guys go, go, uh, go check out everything. And yes, Scott, he did used to coach, uh, in Rome.
Kusa High School in Rome, Georgia.
Did you coach soccer?
Football and soccer.
Foot, both.
And girl's softball at one time.
He said he coached your, you coached, uh, Scott's brother-in-law at Kusa in time.
Who's his brother-in-law?
Scott, Scott Coley, who's your brother-in-law, Scott? The hydration specialist, nobody does hydration like Scott Coley does, by the way, that's a.
And that brother's impre, he's, he's.
He's sticked up.
Losing weight, looking.
He's sticked up.[1674.71] Sticked up.
Got big, yeah, looks good.
It's it, that is one of the amazing things, how many people I've met here in in Rainbow City that I've coached.
Said Randy knows soccer. This generation loves soccer. I can see Jamie Grant shooting a soccer ball.
Yeah, Jamie Grant is not going to play soccer.
No, but I'm gonna tell you this. Jamie Grant came out of the soccer complex during the county tournament. He's he's.
Well, he's a man of the people.
He is, and and I really appreciate that. Um.
Is it Brack? Brack Hassel?
Oh, yes. I coached Brack in football and soccer, I believe. I think it was football first and then soccer. Brack's a great athlete.
Okay.
Great athlete.
I don't guess I know him. I don't know. I'm a friend of Scott Hassel.
Another great individual. I had a great pastor as well.
Sometimes great's a strong word. We use it too much.
Yes, we do.
Is he still at the First Baptist?
The Baptist Church.
We do, but these guys.
In this instance, they're great.
These guys we're talking about, great. I don't claim to be great, uh, you know. And in reality, there's only one great one.
And hey, and we don't claim that you're great.
No, I, trust me on that. But but listen, but again.
Hey, uh, again, how can people reach you? They want a sign, they want a T-shirt, they want free pizza like the Library Kids. How can they reach Randy Vice?
RandyVice@gmail.com.
Okay.
Uh, that's my, it's easy to remember, RandyVice@gmail.com. My telephone number is two five six three two eight forty-four oh six. Uh, and and you give that out there, and there will be people who stalk and harass. Trust me. Every politician will tell you that. And you all you do is hit block.
There you go.
It's an option.
Best button ever invented.
But um, but again, you know, it's, I'm I'm very open for that. I've got all the above, signs, T-shirts.
All the above? I don't see that pizza.
T-shirt. I don't see no T-shirt.
We had, we had a.
I can actually vote for you.
I can.
I can be bald.
I'll bring you a T-shirt.
I can be bald.
The um,